Great. It's six o'clock and we've started the recording, but we're gonna wait a second here for William Woody to switch us over and start the broadcast. So we're just stalling for a minute so we don't lose any of our city council meeting.
And William says we are live, so.
Great.
You go.
Fantastic. Welcome to the regular city council meeting. Regular, that's such a funny word to use. Welcome to the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, May 5th. It's 6:00 PM and we're gonna start our city council meeting tonight with the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm gonna ask all of the participants to mute their microphones and will be led in the pledge by our youth city council member Harrison Hall. Harrison, go ahead.
Let me stop the video.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Harrison's stomach now.
To the Republic. We, we, or, or, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
I'm sorry, could you give me one second? Just a second.
Greg is trying to put up a flag. So this is.
We, we went a little too quickly. We have a whole plan. We've got a flag, but I just, I did it too quickly. So Harrison, hold tight. There we go.
Okay. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate. Lisa Del Piccolo, can I ask you to take roll call?
Barbara Bynum.
Present.
Doug Glassbell.
Present.
Roy Anderson.
Present.
Dave Bowman.
Present.
Dave Frank.
Present.
Harrison Hall.
Present.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Great. Thank you very much. Mr. Glassbell, do we have any changes to the agenda?
No, we do not.
Thank you very much. The next portion of our meeting is the call for public comment for non-agenda items. And this is the opportunity during the meeting that if you want to say something to city council, then we open it up to public comment. This, if you wanna tell us about something that is on our agenda for tonight, hold those thoughts for right now and we'll come back to those when we hit that item on our agenda. So by using your function of raising your hand either like this or through the Zoom function, is there anyone here from the public who wishes to make a public comment tonight?
And Madam Mayor, I see none.
Great. I do not either, but let me just stall for one quick second in case someone is looking for the button.
Okay, yes, I do have one. I'm going to allow Valerie Myers to speak.
Okay, but before she begins, let me go ahead and read our public comment language in that case. So the call for public comment agenda item is a time when concerned members of the community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertaining to matters of, or at least generally important to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussion or debate. Personal attacks and disagreements, personnel, unemployment matters, the use of profanity or ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local law and shall not be permitted. In summary, let me say that, that, that time for a public comment, we, we welcome these comments. We enjoy hearing them. But you'll find that city council won't engage back and forth because it's not on our agenda tonight. So when you bring up something and you bring it up to us in public comment, we'll often follow up by having a staff member reach out to you or we'll follow up with you. But I know it can be really frustrating that we don't respond right in the meetings. And we do that because if Valerie talks to us about something that Mary would have really wanted to be here to hear our answer, she isn't able to because it wasn't on our agenda. So with that, Valerie, we'd love to hear what's on your mind tonight.
Um, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, fantastic. Hi, everybody. Um, thank you for your service. I appreciate it. I have a question. Um, I read in the newspaper that Kovax, a subsidiary of United Biomedical, is under contract to purchase the old Jet Away building at One Creative Place. And I understand that they need some type of, I'm not clear of what kind of approval they need, but I understand that they need some type of city approval and they may need some type of county approval, maybe FAA approval. I'm not 100% sure because I'm just kind of getting my head wrapped around it. And my question is, number one, has the city already met on this topic? And then number two, has the city, is there something scheduled to be put on the agenda? I did not see anything on the agenda in regards to this for this evening's meeting, and if I'm wrong, please correct me.
Sure. Thank you, Valerie. And then I, I was remiss. I forgot to ask you, as we do at every time where there's public comment, for you to introduce yourself for the record with your first and last name and your address, please.
Sure. Um, my name is Valerie Myers and I live at 2928 Lost Creek Road North in the city of Montrose.
Great. And we do welcome public comment from people that live in the city and outside the city, but just for our public records, we require that. So, um, so for all those reasons that I explained before you talked, we're not gonna engage in a back and forth right now. We have not had any public meetings, which is why you haven't seen it on the agenda. And it's not something that we're talking about tonight. But if you wanna shoot the city some emails, that's a really good way to get additional information and a staff member or I will follow up with you. Appreciate it. And again, I hope you can understand why we don't now talk about it because it isn't on our agenda tonight.
Right. And that my question was, and you answered the first question, which was, has there been any meetings about it yet with city council? And you said no. And then the second question is, is this on the agenda? Are you guys, when it will it be on the agenda if they need?
Sure. So all of our agendas are posted before our meetings, but I would, I would imagine that tonight, because it's been a hot topic in our community, that our city manager will be talking a little bit about that during his, his summary of what's going on in the city. And that's usually one of the last things on our agenda in the evening. It's just kind of an update. You can either stay tuned. You can catch it on the, um, you can watch it online on YouTube or we send out a summary of our meeting, what happened at our meeting. So it is not an agenda item that we're gonna, that council's gonna be discussing tonight and, and it's definitely not something council's making any decisions about tonight. So I hope that helps a little bit. And I think that, um, I think that there's more information coming from our city manager when he just updates us both council and the community on things going on in our, our community tonight.
Okay. And I guess just for a public comment, um, I just have concern about us rushing into something that could have, you know, I mean, it could have positive for, it could be positive for our community or it could be negative for our community. And this is something that this company is talking about. They have a, they want Montrose to be the global pep's peptide vaccine center, global. And so I think it, it could have really huge consequences. It could be great. It could be bad. But I think that my opinion and what I just wanna say to city council is this is huge. And I would hope that we would do our due diligence thoroughly before any decisions are made and that the public is made very aware of, of the situation because it affects our livelihood. I am not a vocal person. And typically, unless it's in my circle of just personal friends, but, um, I love this community. I don't ever wanna lead this community. And I want what is good for this community.
Great. Thank you very much, Valerie. We appreciate always, like I said, when people bring comments. But for those reasons I explained earlier, this isn't the right time for us to respond. I know that can be really frustrating, but this just isn't the right way to do that. So, um, I will follow up with you and I just appreciate you coming to council tonight and letting us know. So thank you very much. Great. Are there anybody else that is in the audience that is waving a hand? I don't see any. I don't wanna miss anyone. Does anyone else see one that I'm missing? Okay. I don't think so. Great. We'll go on to, um, agenda item six, which is approval of the minutes from our April 21st regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve the April 21, 2020 regular council meeting as presented.
I'll second that.
Great. Thank you. Lisa, will you call for a vote?
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Bynum, we have unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is item number seven, which is ordinance 2501. This is a second reading. Um, and this is city council consideration of ordinance 2501 on second reading and ordinance of the city of Montrose for the annexation of the 4152 North Townsend addition. And I will turn it over to our planning department, Amy Sharp.
Thank you. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm gonna just start with a brief overview of our schedule like we did last time. You can see this and see where we're at. We started with the city council work session overview back in March, as well as the resolution to set hearing dates, planning commission zoning hearing, the annexation impact report. And then we had the first reading of this ordinance on April 21st. And as you mentioned, tonight is the second reading. So the 4152 North Townsend addition is a proposed annexation that's approximately 10.16 acres in size. The parcel is located northwest of the intersection of Highway 50 Frontage Road and Progress Lane as shown by this little parcel that's highlighted in yellow, kind of up in the upper left of the map. It's within the city's urban growth boundary, the Menocan Water Service Area, the city of Montrose Sewer Service Area. And this owner would like to subdivide the single-family house on the northwest portion of the property from the rest of the property. The city county IGA gives the city the option to annex properties within the IGA. This area is urbanizing and more than one-sixth of the perimeter is contiguous to city limits and these factors support annexation. And the photo to the right on this slide shows what the current business is in that area. I think it's Colorado Fireside. So according to the comprehensive plan future land use map, this area is designated as a potential employment center, which is consistent with the current use. And I kind of highlighted where that parcel is with the black dot in the upper left corner of this map. So at the March 25th, um, planning commission meeting, the planning commission members recommended approval of the initial zoning requests of B3 general commercial district. Everyone voted in favor of this request at that meeting and the staff recommends approval of B3 general commercial, which fits the existing zoning and general conditions in the surrounding area shown on this map. So in summary, the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety and welfare and city annexation policies. An annexation agreement was not needed for this project. The purpose of the annexation is to subdivide the property. The annexation impact report and plus planner's testimony was sent to the board of county commissioners on April 15th. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Amy Sharp. And I hear congratulations are in order to, you are now the city senior planner.
Thank you.
Congratulations on that. Does anyone on council have any questions for Ms. Sharp about this? I don't see any, so I will accept public comment on this particular agenda item, which is the annexation, but not yet the zoning of this property. The zoning is the next agenda item.
Madam Mayor, uh, Ms. Myers has raised her hand again. I will allow her to speak.
Okay. Uh, we're circling back to public comment?
Well, well, isn't that, didn't you just, uh, ask if there was any public comment on the, the zoning?
Yeah. So I do, yes, we are accepting public comment on the zoning of this piece of, of property. So at this point, Ms. Myers, do you have a comment?
Madam Mayor, point of.
I'm sorry, not the zoning. Not the zoning, but the annexation. We're not at the zoning yet. Great. Is she unmuted? Can she speak?
She should be able to speak. Let's see. Uh, this is my first meeting and I would like to provide a follow-up and comment. Okay, so maybe that will be later in the meeting. Okay.
So it doesn't appear that there is any comment about the annexation. Okay. So that being said, I can entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt ordinance 2501 on second reading.
I'll second it.
Great. We have a first by counselor Frank and a second by counselor Anderson. Ms. Del Piccolo, would you please take a roll call?
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have the unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you very much. And this point, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is ordinance 2502, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Montrose providing for the zoning of the 4152 North Townsend addition as a B3 general commercial district. And again, I will ask our senior planner, Ms. Sharp.
Hi, thank you. I'll just refer to my previous presentation for information regarding the zoning for this parcel as well.
Great. Does anyone on council have any questions for Ms. Sharp? Seeing none, um, we actually raised a public comment on this one as well. So is there any public comment regarding the ordinance 2502, which is a zoning ordinance? It doesn't look like there is. So Ms. Del Piccolo, will you please call for a vote?
We didn't have a motion, did we?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. I'm like trying to juggle like three different screens. Keep me in line. Thank you very much. Okay. I know. You all are thinking this is harder than it looks, aren't you? That's what all you former mayors are thinking. Okay.
It is.
So before we vote.
How about a?
We're gonna vote on.
Ms. Bynum, uh, Ms. Mayor, may I move that we approve ordinance 2502 on second reading?
And I'll second.
I'll second that.
Great. Now we have a motion and a second. We have a motion by counselor Bowman and a second by counselor Anderson, who I heard. So now I will ask Ms. Del Piccolo to call for a vote.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Roy Anderson.
Aye.
Dave Bowman.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Mayor Bynum, we have unanimous vote.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, we are going on to staff reports. So no more, no more voting. So that's good. Staff reports. The first one on our agenda, and this is item nine, is a 2A report card, quarterly update. And I will turn it over to our city manager, Bill Bowe, and our police chief, Blaine Hall.
Great. Thank you very much. Blaine's gonna help me out on this one as well, but when we pass 2A, we promised the community and city council that we would do a quarterly update as we move forward in the efforts to adopt the intelligence-led policing model, as well as construct a new public safety complex and hire necessary staff to carry out those objectives. And as part of that, we worked with Kaylee from the Office on Business and Tourism and we were able to get the graphic created that's in the packet as a snapshot. And this will change as we move forward. Every quarter will present a new 2A report card. Some of the items on here will carry forward as we check off the boxes. Uh, but some of the things at the bottom of the, the sheet will change as we go along because it's the current condition report for things that are being added at the police department, being changed in the way we do things based on the current changing needs of the community. So we, for at least two years, maybe three years, we'd like to give the quarterly update via this report card. So that's what's in your packet. Uh, I'll just run through some of this and then, uh, the top part's easy for me. And then when we get into more of the technical side, uh, I'll let Blaine talk about that.
Are we gonna be able to share that on the screen?
Um, is the packet not being shared? I can share my screen.
If you wanna share your screen, I think that makes it easier for everyone watching who doesn't necessarily have a packet. They can't look at the packet online and watch the meeting. And on TV, they don't necessarily have a packet, although I'll take this opportunity to stall while you find it, the show button. That all the city council packets are always available on the city's website. But it can be a little bit confusing because the agenda is one thing and the packet is another. So if you, if you've got just the agenda and it's only two pages long, you don't have all the information. The packet tonight, I believe, is 21 pages long, in which case that is all available for the public to download and look at on the city's website. And it's always posted a couple of days before our meeting. So thanks, Bill, for pulling that up.
Yeah. So you can see it now, I'm assuming? Okay, good. So at the top of the page, you'll see promises made, promises delivered. And that's kind of how we, we put on the left column, the things that we talked about when we went out to the community, things of importance, the plan, all those things are in that left column. And then those checked boxes on the right are checked if we've accomplished something and they're still open if we've yet to accomplish it. So the things under my purview that I just wanna highlight would be the overall budget. So we put into the, uh, the ordinance that went before the people and was approved that no less than 43% of our general operations budget would go toward public safety every year. So in the 2020 budget, we actually were able to do 44% of our general operations budget, which is the $8 million that was included in the 2020 transfer over to the new public safety fund. So that's at the top. We were able to meet that. Now, pending any COVID loss of revenues, those types of things toward the end of the year, that may change on the actual dollar amount, but when we adopted the 2020 budget, that's what we had budgeted for. Uh, as we work our way down, I'll let Blaine jump in in a minute and talk about staffing, but I'll jump down to facility. So we told the community we would need a facility that was estimated, when we did a rough estimate a little over a year ago, to be about $16 million and that we would try to go and borrow money from USDA rural development at three and a half percent interest. It was our goal at the time. And that would allow us to construct a building where the old Wells Fargo drive-in was next to the current police department, as well as the property where the old Travelers Hotel was, which is now the Red Rock on Compaugh Area Mans Plaza, just open space. And so we moved forward with that part of the project. We will close on Thursday, May 7th. Uh, we were able to borrow using certificates of participation at a 3.28% interest rate. We put that on this sheet. Uh, we have about $16 million. That'll keep our debt service on that at less than $900,000 a year, which was our budgeted goal. And so despite COVID and the, the strange stuff going on with the stock market and everything, we were able to actually get a better interest rate and better terms than we had hoped for. So that's really, really positive. Thanks to a lot of people being part of that, but definitely wanna highlight Shani Wittenberg, Finance Director, and then our partners at DA Davidson, who are the finance people. And then in that same facility section, we've checked off site demolition because Jim Shid was able to get, um, our Public Works crews to go in and demo the old Wells Fargo drive-through. And we contracted to a local company to tear down the Kennedy and Co. office building that's behind the police department. And so those sites have been demoed and now they're being prepped. So they're being cleaned up and then we'll have a, a nice level, flat piece of ground to build on. That'll all be done here in the next few weeks, totally done. Then the building design portion, we've checked that because we have hired a police design specialist, Jim McLaren, who's designed the operational design of police departments all across the country and will be working with us on the owner's team to make sure the inside of the building is the most efficient and effective and is based on best practices and based on the actual working model of our specific police department. And he's actually already started interviewing representatives and employees at the police department to make sure that our initial needs assessment is current and up to date. We also hired a firm to serve as our owner's representative firm. And they're the ones that will keep the contractors in check, make sure that the architects and the contractors are doing the job the way we all want them to do it on a daily basis. And they'll be the ones who are making sure that money isn't wasted throughout the project and that what we think we're getting and what we're paying for is actually what we end up with at the end of the day. And so, uh, we checked that box for building design. Construction, we obviously haven't built anything yet, and so that is still open and site prep hasn't been finished. So it's left open right now. So now I'll turn it over to Blaine, Chief Hall, and he can talk about staffing and then just some of the other improvements he's been making.
Thanks, Bill. Good evening, everyone. So yep, I can go through some of our staffing. We've, we've been working very hard to continue that process even through the current COVID-19 pandemic. And I don't, I didn't realize, you know, actually some of the, the strides we'd made until really it was all down on, kind of on paper like you see in front of you. So I'll just go right into it. Starting in August, uh, from a, just a community safety standpoint, not just that we promised the community that this is what we, we do, but, you know, our, our school kids are, are one of our most precious commodities. And so a school resource officer was certainly, an additional one was certainly a priority. And so starting this August, Officer Jeremy Payne, uh, who, uh, is already here in our department, will be assigned to the school resource division. And, and that'll be a, an excellent thing because now we will have a full-time school resource officer in the, um, high school. And then another, uh, school resource officer, actually two, one in each middle school. And so as a result from that, they will still be covering elementary schools, but we will, uh, when we have the resource, be able to then hire that second one. Uh, we have also, um, put an additional detective back in our detective division, one of the three total that were authorized to, uh, support our felony crime and, and serious crime investigations. Um, and that is Samantha Graves, uh, who, uh, was recently, um, put back in the division here in the last two weeks. Uh, we've also, uh, hired, uh, the crime analyst position in UA. You all may, um, I know who that is. That's Juan Harrell. He has been working in that position now for quite some time and is, has, and this kind of goes down towards the public safety improvements. We've had to adjust with the COVID situation. We had planned, uh, really on being a little further ahead in the ILP side of things, uh, but we had. we had to readjust. And so he made an hour-long training video that's accessible now through the Axon solution, which is our body cam solution, but it also gives us a repository where we can actually record training videos and then push those out to the department. So because we can't any longer bring officers into the building in large groups, as you know why, to train them, he's created that video. And so we are pretty much finished with that side of, of that, with the training of ILP and what that looks like. And his position so far has also been focused on helping us get through some of the technical sides of the the Axon body camera, body worn camera installation and things like that, along with IT. Moving on, I think I will let Stephen talk about the public safety attorney position.
When we started looking at the public safety attorney position, when we first, this is long before the, we even started looking at public safety sales tax. We started looking, what, what would be the dream candidate? And we kind of designed this dream candidate. And what we didn't realize is that we were designing a position that was tailor-made for Matt Magliaro. And we are so lucky to have Matt. Matt came from the District Attorney's Office, and I'd be remiss if I wouldn't thank Dan Hotson Keller for his graciousness in losing one of his best employees. But I think Dan realized or is willing to accept the fact that it's something that's really good for the community. And it's something that Matt was almost designed for. But he has a background in civil law as well as criminal law. He has a passion for a public service and public safety. He's already done a lot of really good things. He has a very good blend of legal geekiness and police earthiness. And it's really been beneficial. He can relate to the police officers, but at the same time, he loves to geek out on a good search and seizure case coming down from the Supreme Court. So we're very fortunate to have him. And I think that he's already in a very short period of time, proven his worth, which just means we're raising the bar and level of expectations for him. But couldn't be happier for that. Bill or Blaine, I think that you even have one or two decent, well, halfway decent things you can say about him besides a lawyer joke.
Yeah, no, I, so just some of the things that he's doing without going into some of the details. He's already involved with the Drug Task Force and some of those cases, at least to ensure that we are providing the best prosecutable case that we can. Also involving not necessarily federal prosecution, but being able to integrate and look at that evidence. As you might imagine, we, you know, we had those indictments here about a month and a half ago. But that doesn't mean that there will be other things that will be certainly coming down the road there. He has also been an excellent resource for our patrol officers just from a general standpoint of being able to have some of the affidavits reviewed for that critical eye. Prosecutions are, are they're unique, not just from a criminal justice standpoint, but also from a community standpoint. And no different than a police department. And it's, it's awesome that Matt comes from Dan's office already. And so he has that insight as to what, you know, really the criminal justice environment in Montrose expects and what some of those limitations could be. And, and also, you know, how to maybe expand what that role looks like for, for a certain number of our cases. So he's, he's gonna be excellent and we're really, really happy to have him. He's, like Stephen said, perfect for the fit of the job. And I'll open it up to questions here in a, in a minute. I would like to go through some of the public safety improvements. There, yeah, there we go. We already talked about ILP and training officers, something that I'm really excited about that maybe Bill can also comment on is we have we created and hired the position for the Director of the Future Law Enforcement Academy partnering with Colorado Mesa University. That is a thing. It is happening. And Sergeant Billy Stroop, who was our Detective Sergeant, applied for that position and was selected. Then to backfill that position, we put Sergeant Michelle Berry from the street into Detective Sergeant. So now she serves as our Detective Sergeant, which is one of the most critical positions in the entire police department. So we're really happy to have her. But having said that, Sergeant Stroop is now our academy director and has been working directly with CMU in Grand Junction, albeit mostly virtually with John Patnazi, who's the Director for the Western Colorado Peace Officer College, which, Peace Officers Academy, which is the subsidiary of CMU. And then also has already made some great relationships with the Colorado Post Board and, and the training, training individuals out of, out of Denver. So there is a lot going on with that position. You know, I think you can always be told that the water is cold and it's something that we absolutely want to do. We want to do it because we feel like it's going to just bolster our hiring and it's going to make us a more professional organization. But Billy Stroop is, that is absolutely a forty-hour position and then some for all the things you can imagine that we are trying to do and the standards we're trying to meet to stand up a summer police academy for 2021. But it's, it's going very, very well, and I can answer, you know, any questions as far as that goes. Next, I would have to say probably the highlight of some of the equipment that we've purchased that honestly, we wouldn't, wouldn't have been able to afford if not for two A, and then also sitting, our city manager and council, having the insight as far as the need is the Axon body worn cameras in the fleet system. And so that is well underway. We have those at the police department now. Those have been issued to our police officers. There is definitely some training involved as far as how, what they're used for, potentially what they're not used for. Axon is also providing a free license to the District Attorney's Office. And so the the providing of discovery will now be a whole lot simpler rather than just burning Blu-rays for every case that we have and then providing them kind of in that maybe more archaic, archaic way of, of doing it. It's also just going to be a fantastic tool for being able to, you know, protect the community and protect our officers. Something that we've been working with Matt and Stephen on is developing a policy to ensure that those body cameras are used correctly and also be very sensitive about the privacy rights of our citizens. And you can imagine that's kind of a fine balance to strike. But I think that we've, we've got a pretty good policy in draft form right now that will be ready to go when we go live with the body cameras, which I imagine will probably be within the next month. So that's a good thing. And then lastly, something that, you know, that's kind of come up on the radar. It's something that I learned at the FBI Academy. It seems so long ago, but you know, our department, we have definitely dabbled in social messaging and our social image. And let's face it, that's how a lot of individuals get their information these days. And, but it is kind of like pulling the, the cap off the bottle. And once the genie gets out, your public has a certain expectation that if you have a social image, that you're managing it, you're maintaining it. And so this was actually credit to Chelsea Rostie and her team to come forward and say, hey, we'd like to help out with this. We'd like to, you know, explore what kind of that PIO side of a police department looks like and really delve into social, the police department's social image and, and social messaging. So hopefully you've noticed kind of an increase there on our Facebook site with what we're doing, especially how we're sharing the COVID-19 related information. And then if you haven't seen it, we started an Instagram page here a few months ago with, all with the help of Chelsea and her team. And I, I think it's been excellent. And so we're moving down the road in that direction to, to try to give a, give more information, more timely information and an even more professional and, and I guess, better image, you know, of our agency. So that's a lot of stuff. And I'm, I'm happy to answer questions or if any of the other staff have something they want to add, please feel free.
Thank you, Chief Hall. Does any city staff or city councillor have any questions for Chief Hall?
Madam Mayor, if I could just add a couple of comments related to the CMU partnership.
Sure.
Really excited about that. And we didn't get into a lot of detail, but it's a shared salary position between us and CMU. So CMU is paying part of that. And we get free slots in that academy because we're going to be teaching a lot of the classes in partnership with the Montrose County Sheriff's Department. And so it, we get a good return on that investment. We get the localized education, the assistance in hiring, quicker return on our hiring practices, hopefully. And once we want people to come back into our community, it will be a regional draw from all over Western Colorado because it's one of the only summer academies in Colorado that's open to the general public that isn't tied to one specific law enforcement agency. So it's going to be a really important piece for all of the region. And it'll be housed right here. Until we get our new facility built, it'll be housed in the Cascade Hall Building and the Education Building here on the CMU Montrose Campus. Just wanted to throw those things in there.
Great. Thank you very much. Does anyone, and I think you can stop sharing your screen now. Does anyone have any questions for Chief Hall or Bill Bell about the two A report card? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So Mr. Bell, do you have additional information for us under the next item, which is public information report?
Yes, and I think Greg just unshared my screen for me. Because I didn't, that's a thank you, Greg. I appreciate that. So we've gotten quite, I, normally we don't get a lot of emails on particular topics. I've gotten about ten probably on the COVAX issue, the business that's looking to come into town. There's a lot of misinformation out there on social media, which is normal. Just people get to talking and then the conversation kind of spirals. But the facts, as far as the city understands it, is their, COVAX is a company, the, from Telluride area. The owner is a gentleman raised in Ridgeway and then Telluride. So somewhat locally owned. They called us a couple of weeks ago now, it feels like, and asked if we would go out and have a meeting honoring social distancing and masked up. We went out to the hangar that's located at One Creative Place on the, just adjacent to the airport taxiways and stuff. It's separated by a chain link fence. And so we went out and we went and listened to what they were thinking of, of running with their business. And we had their business plan. They sent that to us. We forwarded that out to city council, just general information about their business. And I think they've, the company itself has put together an FAQ sheet for people who have questions about their business, that type of thing. I'm not too sure about, we didn't help draft that or anything, but I think it's out there. Our understanding, based on their business plan and their, their model, was that they would want to bring in a facility that would put together test kits and distribute those out of the hangar facility. And then they would work on vaccine development in a lab in that facility. And they really need the ability to work in a way that's called through the fence on airport property where the chain link fence would go away. And they could fly in supplies to build the kits. They would fly in the medical type stuff, blood samples, whatever it is when you do vaccine development. I'm not in that business. But that, they would be able to fly them in, take the airplanes right into the hangar facility, unload and load right there and fly them out. And I think they mentioned about six flights a day would come in and out of that facility. And so we just listened to their plan and then Anne and I, in planning, analyzed the zoning for them. They wanted, one of the first things businesses always want to know is, is the zoning available for us to do what we want to do? So we looked at the zoning of that particular property because it's in the city limits and it is properly zoned for lab-type work, medical facility, distribution warehouse, light assembly, all those types of things that they were planning on doing. And so we told them that it's properly zoned for that. And that's really the extent of the city's involvement in this project. A lot of the letters addressed to us, most of those were addressed to council and/or city manager. And the social media posts is just asking the city not to approve the business to come to town. And I think a lot of those same letters and requests went to the county asking the same thing. Just want to put it out there, we don't have the ability to tell a business, they can't come to our community if the property they want to purchase is properly zoned for whatever activity they want to do. We can't tell them they can't come to that facility. I believe their business model is, is so reliant on the ability to work through the fence and fly those planes in and out of that facility directly. I think there's a lot of timelines, from what I've heard. It's an extended timeline to make that happen with the county and the FAA as well as Homeland Security. There's been questions in the posts. Why does Homeland Security get involved? Obviously, it's dangerous. All I can say is that Homeland Security is involved with any type of business that wants to locate on an airport. That's just how it is. It doesn't matter. You could be sewing quilts. And if it's done on an airport, Homeland Security is going to get involved in your business. That's just how it is. Because of the nature of it, right? They want to make sure you're not flying drugs in and out of that facility. They want to make sure you're not flying illegal immigrants in and out of that facility, that you're not doing bad things. Airports are very important to us and our communities. So I wouldn't necessarily say because Homeland Security is, has to be part of the approval process that that makes it a ultra-dangerous business. But I don't know enough about this type of business to tell you if it's dangerous or not to a community. I can just tell you that, that doesn't throw up a lot of red flags for, you know, Blaine and me and others that know that Homeland Security would, would always be involved in an airport-type business. That's really all I know about it. Unless you have specific questions you want me to research or get in contact with the county or the business, that's all I know from my side of things.
Bill, I just want to clarify, when you said we had a meeting, that was a city staff meeting. We have not had a city council meeting. And I just want to make sure, because earlier I said we haven't had a city council meeting in this.
Oh, sure. That was a plan, really.
Stuff has a lot of meetings to run the city that do not involve city council. I did attend that meeting. But it was not a, a city council meeting, which of course, we would have had an agenda and the quorum.
Right. Yeah, no, that was a planning-type meeting. They wanted to show us, they had been talking to us about the zoning and, and given us their business plan and everything so we could analyze the zoning. But they wanted to show us in person what they're talking about. And so Chelsea and Anne and I and, and the mayor went out. I think that's it from our side. And then their realtor and, and the owner of the building were, was there as well. Sandy Head was there from MEDC. So yeah, definitely wasn't a, a council meeting. No decisions were being made at that meeting. It was just to hear their, their plan. And really, the, at this point in time, you won't be showing up on a council agenda either because there's no decision for the city council to make. for the city council to make, uh, at this point in time. No incentives are being offered, no incentives are being requested. It wasn't even a, one of those types of projects.
Right. And are you saying that we wouldn't even be holding hearing to change zoning or anything? That the airport is, are, is, is zoned for a use like that? So.
This particular property is already zoned, um, light industrial, which is everything they would need to do what they want to do.
So we, we don't anticipate any need for any kind of a public hearing because we're not making any decisions?
Right now, as it sits, yes. I don't know, uh, if the county is going to move forward with the through the fence. I don't know if the, if they're willing to do that, how long that takes, if the business is even, uh, going to be able to, to move to town or anything like that. But as of, no.
So any of the decisions that need to be made at this point are really the county's decisions and not the city's?
Correct.
I think that helps clarify to whom people should be talking, um, if they are, want to give input on future decisions.
Yeah, and I, I think the county's perspective that, from what I've heard from the county is that they haven't told the business that you absolutely can't do this. But they've told the business how long it might take to make it work and how much money it might cost to make it work. And the last thing I heard is that the business is, uh, analyzing whether that is doable.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else going on with our public information report? Anything else?
No, we talked a lot at the work session yesterday, just updates on what's going on in the community. And, and, uh, I think now that we're airing the work sessions, uh, unless you have specific questions, I don't have a lot to add to what we talked about.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, we're going to move on to city council comments. And we're going to start with comments from, uh, our youth counselor, Harrison Hall. Harrison, can you give us an update on what youth council has been up to?
Yes, ma'am, I can. Let me poke my little iPad here. So we are currently still doing our tutoring. We reorganized that a little bit. That is going very well. We had a few requests that came in. And then we had Rotary, who we partnered with to create a banner for thanking first responders, which is currently hanging at the Montrose Memorial Hospital. Then we also had the Regional Youth Leadership Meeting Time Discussion, which is basically where youth councils around the state of Colorado, where we all come together and have a representative from one of each youth council. We all discuss and try and give each other new ideas for each other's youth councils. And then we are also currently updating our manual, which we will be voting on next youth council meeting, which is tomorrow. And then, yeah, that is all I got. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hall. Can you tell us if youth council ends with the school year or do you guys continue on through the summer? And what are, what's in plan for next year? Like, do we, we'll see youth council applicants in the fall? Is that correct?
Um, I don't currently have an answer to that right now, but I can tell you that we are going to have some youth council representatives attend different meetings or events during the summer.
Great.
So if that helps.
I enjoy having you guys here and having you attend city council meetings. So, um, I know summer is your break from school, but we invite you to continue coming to city council meetings or enjoy your summer vacation and your jobs and all of those things as well. So thank you. Does anyone on council have any questions for Mr. Hall about the youth council? Doesn't look like anyone does. Thank you very much. Okay. In no particular order, um, counselors, who would like to kick it off with an update from their, Roy, fantastic, Mr. Anderson?
I, um, I would like for the public, I think there's a lot of confusion right now as to the rules, how we're, uh, rolling out the safer at home. Um, I know that Chelsea's covered a lot in her meetings, but I'm not sure if that reaches the same audience. And I got a call from a neighbor today about having yard sale. And, um, so we got some clarification on that. But I wondered if either Bill or Chelsea, one of you could just quickly go over again where we're at right now in terms of what businesses and people can do, um, how it's changed from, let's say, a week ago.
Do you want me to take that, Bill? Okay. Thanks. Great question. Um, we have an ambassador team who has, is comprised of volunteers from both the city and the county and, um, at large as well. Um, Mayor Bynum is on that ambassador team. And so we've been going out, um, and meeting with businesses in different districts and trying to provide information for them, uh, in masks from six feet apart as much as possible. Um, we've got some great materials that the county has produced on different sectors and what the business sectors can do to open safely and operate safely. That being said, we realize that that doesn't reach everybody. And, um, the county's hotline, which of course I don't have right in front of me, is a great resource. Um, I do know COVID-19 at montrescounty.net businesses and the public can email that for any questions relating to business or health in general, testing sites, all of those different type of things, and get a response very quickly. Um, the city has teamed up with, uh, Jim Austin from the county, Sue Hanson and others, um, who are answering all of these questions on the spot. So they get, the best thing that I can say, if there are questions, please reach out to one of us. We'll get those, um, answers taken care of for the businesses. And then as things start to change, as we know they will, moving towards restaurants opening and those type of things, we'll try to be proactive in sharing the information, both, um, with the media, through email, social media, on the business calls, in the newspaper. As we did last time, we partnered with the county on that messaging, getting it out to the public as best we can. So I know it doesn't hit everyone. Um, we are trying to use the retail sales list, um, from the city sales tax side to communicate with business owners, but that doesn't reach everybody because sometimes that goes to a person in accounting rather than the head decision maker. So, uh, but that is what we're doing currently to try to get the information out. And if there are suggestions on other ways we can do that, we, we'd love to chat about it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Chelsea.
Anything else, Mr. Anderson?
No, no, I'm good. That's, that's, uh, what I wanted to cover. Thank you.
Great. Okay.
I'll make a comment. I just want to thank Bill and the staff. I think they're doing a great job under these circumstances. Also would like to caution people when they're out in the public. It seems like as we've let up a little bit on our requirements, uh, people may be going a little too far. I think they need to be a little cautious and careful when they're, continue to wear masks as, as often as they can. That's all I have.
Um, I'd first like to thank, uh, Bill Bell for the update on UBI and COVAX and everything at the airport. That's been a real big issue. I had several people contact me today, so I asked Bill to speak about that this evening. And I, I hope that for, for Valerie and all the other people that have contacted council, I hope that Bill's comments, um, make sense to you. You now understand what's going on and certainly the city is on this. And, and Bill is not going to sell us out on this, trust me. Um, but I, I thank Bill for being prepared tonight and, and for your comments. Um, I happened to be out by the airport the other day and noticed the fence around, uh, the mag fluoride tank on North Ninth. And I would encourage first council and staff to go out there and take a look at that. And I would encourage the community to take a look at that and sort of see what you think. Um, I had a meeting today with, uh, a bunch of event planners and promoters. Uh, Alexis Perran from the city was also there, uh, on Zoom chat. And if I was the betting man, I would say there's not going to be free music on the Western Slope this summer. Um, we have not made the decision yet. We're waiting for advice from the governor. But I just sort of want to put it out there that this summer is going to be very, very different from anything we've ever seen on the Western Slope before. Um, but the good news is, I want to say Happy Mother's Day to my mother, my wife, my daughter, and all the wonderful ladies and moms out there. I don't know what Mother's Day is going to be like to some, this Sunday, but please be safe. I know the families will be getting together, groups will be getting together when possible. Please practice social distancing. Let's get this thing over with. I still am hoping that if nothing else by September, we can open up our community. We can be together. Hopefully schools will be open, high school football and girls volleyball and music. All those great things will be happening again, but they're not going to happen unless we behave, for lack of a better word, right now. What we do now will determine what happens in three months. Please, Montrose, be Montrose. Be the people that believe in our community and each other. And please keep as, each other safe. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bowman. Mr. Frank?
I just wanted to build a little bit on what, uh, Councilman Bowman has mentioned, that a lot of the free events and a lot of the, the concerts and a lot of the music and a lot of the, the, uh, wine festivals and stuff are primary fundraising events for all of our local charities and a lot of our nonprofits. So today is Giving Tuesday. I would encourage everybody to help support all of these great, great organizations that are going to be in real financial straits because of the lack of these events. Um, I have donated my first three months' salary for council to the Montrose Community Foundation, to the Emergency Relief Fund. And I would just encourage people to remember that these, uh, events weren't just fun for the community, although they are, they're also the biggest, biggest fundraising events for a lot of these charities. So please step up. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilor Frank. Um, I will, you guys have covered a lot of great information for our community. We have a very resilient community. We have a very diverse economy here that is really holding us fast through these difficult times, although it has been difficult on many different people. Um, I want to give you a little update about Montrose High School graduation because that is another hat I wear as the mom of a Montrose High School senior. So for Montrose High, they're going to be doing a, a car drive-through graduation on Sunday, May seventeenth. They're going to be driving, um, up Rio Grande from the Russell Stover parking lot to the high school. And the community has been invited in to line Rio Grande, staying socially distant in their cars or standing outside their cars socially distant as the parade of seniors go by. Um, the seniors have been asked not to get out of their cars. So this is not a, a time for hugs and, and tears and whatnot. But the seniors will be going, um, will be driving from Russell Stover, starting at two o'clock on Sunday, May seventeenth. And it looks like, I was going to share the county's website, but it looks like maybe our Director of Business Innovation, Chelsea Rostie, do you have that up? Is that what you want to share with us? She's asking for permission to share her screen.
It's the thank you photo for Giving Tuesday.
Oh, that works too.
Sorry.
That's great.
Do you want me to do it now?
Sure.
Okay. This one moment, there we go. Um, just wanted to say thank you and I love this. So I want to get it out there as much as possible to our nonprofits and those people supporting the community.
Our nonprofits do so much important work in this community. Um, and I think it was great that this nationwide effort, um, to recognize the important role that nonprofits play in communities was really great. And I appreciate that everyone, um, did their homework and took a picture of their letter. So thank you very much and thank you to all of our nonprofits and Montrose. You really keep us going and we appreciate so much the work that you do. Great. And I was going to show the county's website, um, which is really fantastic source of information that the city and the county are working closely together. But that this, um, website that the county has put together is full of all the information to look at in terms of COVID resources and, and public health. With that, does anyone have any final comments or questions? This is a weird way to do a meeting as usual. Um, I don't want anyone to feel like they didn't get a turn to say anything, including our, um, our city staff members. I don't see any, so I can accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
On second thought.
Fantastic. By proclamation, we are adjourned.